The broad line is only applies to us.
Yeah. All right. We can, we can do that now.
We'll get started. We will start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, did I hit you hard in the chair?
Okay. For roll call, we've got Mark Donovan. Sorry. Swallowed around. Susan Gurek, Danielle Joann, Martha Majeski, Bob Cooney, Lori Getz, Phil Brennan, Paul completely.
Bettinger.
Bettinger, and Tina Stevens, present. Uh, let me get my glasses going here. Tonight before the meeting, as well as December thirteenth and January third, we had an executive session to discuss property acquisition, personnel matters, as well as potential litigation. And first, we're reaction acceptance of minutes of the board's, the Board of Supervisors' December seventh meeting, 2022 business meeting, and January third, 2023 reorgs meeting. All departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors on the month of December twenty-second. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, the board? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report. Consideration of acceptance of treasurer's report for the period ending December thirty-first, 2022, I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So for a period ending December thirty-first, 2022, we had a general fund balance of just over three point six million, down about one point three million over November, not unexpected. It contained all of the year-end expenses, which also included the surplus transfers of six hundred and fifty thousand that the board approved at the December meeting. And we ended 2022 with a general fund surplus of about four hundred thousand.
Excellent. Any comments from the public? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ratification of distribution of dispersments dated December twenty-ninth, 2022. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
This is just the second check run in December that we ran, so we're just ratifying those dispersments for December.
Public comment? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of dispersments dated January eleventh, 2023, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
And these are current month dispersments, and all of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Any public comment? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Two-minute reports. Board liaisons. Mark?
Nothing.
All right, Susan?
Nothing to report. I don't think anyone met in December.
I don't know.
Pretty much no.
I don't think so.
There will be a clean energy transition meeting tomorrow night, and I will have more to report at our next meeting.
Here, great.
Two-second report.
There was a two-second report.
I will say we had a very good meeting with the Valley Forge Fire Company this week, and things are going really well there. We got to tour the facilities and learn quite a bit, so we appreciate everything you guys are doing. Township manager. He reports to, on your.
Very brief. Some of you may have noticed there's some work going on on Valley Park Road at Anderson, on the bridge there. Those were emergency repairs. I know I reported before that PennDOT notified us that they're going to be doing a bridge replacement there. That's not slated to start until September, September of this year, and will probably go through 2024. These are emergency repairs. We expect it to be done quickly, but we received no prior notification of the work being done. So we've gotten some calls. We're trying to sort out when they're going to be finished, but that's what's going on there, just emergency repairs. Part of the bridge collapsed.
Is there a weight limit on that bridge right now?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you know that?
Yes, they changed the posting one.
Did they change it?
Yeah, the fire company's not running around it.
Yeah, that's.
Wow.
Yes.
What's interesting is part of the wall facing this direction caved in, but it seems like it's only part of the wall. I don't know if that impacts the structural.
They put a weight rule before that.
Okay.
Um, so you have to go country club and then go around?
We do have a twenty-three.
I didn't know anything, nobody informed us about it.
Can be a little quicker, yeah.
It really depends on the location.
How much does that fire truck weigh?
Uh, which one?
The heaviest one.
Twenty-eight tons.
Okay.
What's it supposed to weigh?
It's well over.
About thirteen, full.
Twenty-eight is the one, so maybe the stage making guys look bad. But the moment it comes out, Valley Park, so that would be the one.
Thirteen to fifteen.
Do we know what the new limit is?
Well, it's like thirteen tons.
It might be designed just.
It's a ton or a great brother.
Okay. So I did see them out there earlier today working on it.
Yeah, they were working today, yeah.
All right.
Any idea when those repairs would be done?
I do not know.
They haven't communicated anything.
I know nothing. They have communicated nothing to me. No, so I'm trying to get information from them, but we've received no, no notification of it.
So it's not a, it's not, it's not PennDOT Road, is it?
It is.
It's PennDOT.
It's a PennDOT Road. Yep. Yep. The only other thing I have is for, for the January workshop meeting on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, that is the new date, it's now the fourth Thursday of the month. The, on the agenda for that meeting will be the unveiling of the new website that will launch the next day. So we'll cover that that night, and we will also, I'll provide an update on some lingering township projects.
Good deal.
So we will have a January workshop, so we all get to see each other three times this month.
Hey.
I feel special.
All right, thanks Lori. Chief, Bill, any updates you'd like to give us?
Now, we've completed the, our community relations actually.
Can you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, Bill. Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Jim Hennessy completed the shop the cop, which we did in conjunction with the elementary schools, and he co-driven, co-driven, and stuff. They'll be probably doing another one, but that's currently what we finished up. You all have the monthly report. So if there's any questions on that, I can answer it, but other than that, I'll do that.
I think we're good.
Yeah. I think we're good, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Sorry.
That's all right. Township engineer, anything you want to update us on?
Sure, Paul Lehman-Drye. So the storm installation is still going on. They're going towards the North Forge Mountain side of the road, so they're, they're past Oakwood, the curb, and they're moving up. Areas that have been disturbed, they've been repaired with cold patch because presently the ambient temperature to install paving hasn't, we haven't reached it for an extended period, plus most asphalt plants aren't operating at this time between both the holidays and the cold weather and the limited orders. We are going to provide Lori a detailed update on the project, and that's going to be, the grant expires in the June of this year, and we're going to ask for a extension, not that because the final paving will be done at that point, but we're concerned if there's any final punch list items or closeout documents that Dolly would need to provide us and give to the, to the grantor. So that's the, that's the update for Paul Lehman.
It is open to traffic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, they're, they're putting the cold patch down, you know, as a temporary, you know, pavement, but you know, once the time comes and it gets warm enough, they're going to pave it the correct way.
Residents and bus drivers are very happy about that.
I'm sure.
Good deal. Thanks, Paul.
Sure.
As I stated, we went to the fire company. You guys have any updates you want to give us for what's going on over there?
We are just.
Tom, can you come to the microphone, please?
That's all right, keep jumping in.
We are working through our normal winter training items, and in the process of research line with the state to show them documentation that at least three quarters of our firefighters have firefighting wounds, believe it. And we're also getting re-certified as a heavy rescue, which means that we carry, it's validation of our training equipment, and we will be one of three companies in the county that have.
Great. Notice you have the sprinkler systems going in, I think just waiting for the water to come through now?
We do.
So I think it's on Aqua to get the line running.
Yes, it's underway, and gas line during the way.
Great, looks like they did a nice job.
Oh, yeah.
Good deal.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, new business, approval of police department promotion for Officer James Diorya to corporal effective January first, 2023. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
There will be a formal ceremony for the, for the promotion, but we're just doing this, this is kind of just the administrative end of it. So we'll keep you posted on the date for the ceremony that'll appear on a future agenda.
Excellent. Any comments from the public? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay. Approval of police department promotion of Officer Rob Catron?
Catron.
Catron to full-time officer, effective January one, 2023. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's all right, any discussion?
So same deal, Rob has been, Rob's been a part-time police officer for us for some time, so he is for 2023 being promoted to a full-time officer, and same deal, this is just the boring administrative part, so obviously you see that they're not here tonight to be celebrated, but has to be done.
Good deal, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Authorized advertisement to bid the green light go traffic signal improvement along Valley Forge Road. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion?
I'm just really glad that we've gotten this far. This has taken years.
Yep.
This is, this is probably back 2017, maybe, 2018.
Oh, yeah. Covid, covid delays.
Yes.
Multiple grant extensions, yes.
I'm really glad that we're actually putting this out to bid.
Me too.
That's my only comment.
All right, any public comment? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consideration of approval of upfitting costs in the amount of sixty-two thousand to three hundred and five dollars to the twenty, 2022 Ford F-600 in road department. This is a budgeted item utilizing liquid fuel funds, I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So this was the vehicle that we purchased using, we purchased the chassis in 2022 utilizing liquid fuels money, so this is just the upfitting of that vehicle. This is the full plowed truck, it's the replacement of, Martha, you'll like this, Nick told me, tell Martha it's the truck she drives. So this is a replacement of the 2013 vehicle. This is just the second half of the new vehicle we acquired in 2022.
So just to let everybody know, when they say I drive it, I only do that for trash, for litter pickups, okay? I don't drive, I don't use it personally and drive it around the, the township, so.
Thank you for your service. Any public comment? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of approval of fire service strategic planning services by Jerome, Jerome Ozog Enterprises LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred. This is a budgeted item, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
How did we choose, you know, this particular consultant? Is this someone that has done this type of work?
Yeah. For a lot of organizations through PSATs, so Pennsylvania State Association Township Supervisors, he's, he does a lot of work for member, member townships, member municipalities throughout the state, so he's done a lot.
Didn't you meet him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Bob's.
Oh, you've met him.
Bob met him before, yeah. Saw some of his work product, we were satisfied with the, the quality of the work product, and reviewed that before we considered him for.
That's, that's exactly what I'm getting to, because I'm looking at the deliverables in the proposal, and you could interpret what that looks like in a lot of different ways, so if you've seen what those deliverables look like, and you're happy with them, then it's reassuring.
Any public comment? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolutions and ordinances, approval of resolution number two zero two three dash oh eight, adopting initiatives to be reorganized as a Pennsylvania Audubon Council, Birdtown, Pennsylvania. I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Do you want me to just give a brief, or did you want to?
No, if you want to.
Okay. So we've been a member of Birdtown already, this is really just an update of the resolution that we had in place before. I think they, Birdtown themselves made some updates to their program, and this is something that the EAC has been a part of and takes the lead on, and is requesting that the board pass.
Good deal, public comment? Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of resolution number 2023 dash oh nine, designating Schuylkill Township as a B-City USA affiliate. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
This is also for the EAC, yeah, very similar. It's really just about conservation, and the EAC will host some, yeah, they'll promote it, they'll do some educational initiatives and special events, so yeah, just another way that we can be more environmentally cautious in the township.
They mentioned some initiatives where they could involve like local, local organizations like the Girl Scouts and stuff like that.
Yes.
I remember that was the random EAC meeting I happened to make. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a township resident came in and made a presentation to the EAC about the benefits of the program, and yeah.
And, and I think at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, because you, the two of you attended that, didn't we already at that time accomplish ninety-nine percent of their requirements, so it was kind of like, we may as well?
It was suggested that take the next step and just.
Yeah, and just do it, because we already do it anyway.
And the B-C, the B-C, the B-City Committee, Committee is going to be formed out of the EAC?
Yes.
Okay, so it will be.
With, I think, the one extra member from the community?
Mm-hmm.
He was also going to.
Yes, correct, yes.
Very interested in participating.
Right. And they will be, so I, I see, I mean, I'm all for integrated pest management and reduction of pesticides, and they'll be, it was, it's part of their, their normal advisory function, but providing some additional guidance in specific areas to promote.
And education as well.
Yep, exactly.
All right, any public comment? Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we covered the birds and bees, let's go to resolution.
Working on that.
Yeah, actually, it just came out, somebody mentioned it out there. All right, approval of resolution number 2023 dash ten, adopting Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
This is a requirement, it's part of the green light go.
Okay. Just read any public comment. All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't need to overcomplicate it, yeah.
Subdivision land development, zoning hearing board application proposed Wawa Route twenty-three and White Horse Road. Application proposes to demolish the existing structures and reconstruct Wawa Convenience Store with ten fuel pumps. Where do we go with that?
Well, I guess I can jump in, the, this is the preliminary or first step in the process of the application to replace the current convenience store with pumps with the Wawa, which will be much larger. There is a sort of a complex land issue involved. They are starting with four properties, they need to blend them into one, get a new UPI number, and divide that in half, so that has led to some complexities in terms of dealing with our ordinances. There are actually two major steps. One is the zoning, they have to comply with the technicalities of our zoning ordinance, and there are five issues where they are seeking variance relief. Now, what they're saying is, in essence, they, they don't really need this relief because they already have legal rights based upon the existing facility, and our position is essentially questioning that a bit and saying, not so fast, even though you have a, a condition, even though you have the actual use in place of a convenience store with gas, you're opening up a new UPI number, you're creating a new lot, so it is as though we were dealing with a new farm lot in this application. The practical problem is, the relief that they're seeking in general terms is, reflects a construction that is less impactful than the one that's existing now. I'll give you an example, one of the issues is, how close are your gas pumps to the street? And the, their plan doesn't comply with the, the distance requirement, but their proposal has the gas pumps further away from the street than they are now. So we run into these, you know, these unusual arguments on these technical issues. There are five points, and I think we're setting a special night for this every second, and trying to decide where, we don't know whether it will be here or somewhere else, that will be worked out. So the next step in the process is the conditional use hearing. The zoning ordinance authorizes certain uses as conditional uses, and generally speaking, they are significant matters, like airports and steel mills and things like that, that you would want your supervisors to weigh in on, and convenience store is in that same category. So it's, it's a situation where it's permitted by law under the zoning ordinance unless it's unusually damaging or dangerous to the community. So that's the next step, and, and my observation is that the applicant prob code does not want to go to that step until it has its zoning in line. In the, in the conditional use hearing, the applicant puts his case on, and this supervisor's hear the case, and they can approve it, they can deny it, or they can approve it with conditions. And some of you may recall that in the last case, the application was approved with thirty-five or so conditions, you know, that, the conditions are pretty common in the, in the conditional use paradigm, so that's coming later. If they get through those two steps, then they will move ahead with their plan approval process, engineers would go through and make sure it complies with, the plans have to comply with all the ordinances. If that's acceptable, then the plan would be signed by the township, by the applicant, and recorded in Chester County. There'd be some requirements for ESCO agreements and compliance with storm order requirements, and then at that time, they would commit for their building permit, they'd demolish the existing facility and build their Wawa. So I'm a little windy here with this, but the, the only thing that's on the board's agenda tonight is the zoning hearing board yet to be firmed up for February second, and the five issues that have been raised in the application, dealing with technicalities, three of them, two of them have to deal with the distance from the gasoline canopy for encroaching on the front yard setback, one of them has to do with the fueling pumps. There's, there are a couple of the technicals allowing parking spaces to encroach into the front yard setback greater than half the distance of the required setbacks, and there's a signage question, they want to have their standard Wawa sign package, and their argument is going to be, we do it everywhere, and there's an issue about whether it's a hardship not to have the sign. So, I mean, comparatively minimal items in my view, but that's what's before the board. So the supervisors can allow the zoning hearing board to decide the case, or they can send, solicit or invite itself to appear and oppose it. Those, generally townships don't send, send anyone to support applications for zoning relief because it's felt that that's imposing on the, the good judgment of the zoning hearing board, so that's much before you. I'm sorry to take you so long.
So the question is, do we want to have representatives sent to oppose those issues at the zoning hearing board?
These one, two, three, four, five that are enumerated in there. So one of the things that I am concerned about is the, is the location of the gasoline canopy approximated to the street. I understand that it's being, it is, that, with respect to that, it, it does appear that this is a, an improvement over what is existing with the existing Exxon, because it is moving it back about twenty feet. However, we are considering this as a, a new reconstituted parcel, and we would have to push it back, I think, another thirteen, is it another thirteen? No, twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three feet normally, if this was, if this was a greenfield and they were going to be putting it in. Bob, just, Bill, just to be clear, we could ask you to represent our interest at the zoning hearing board, and you could take a position on one of these five matters.
Or two.
And be silent on all of the others.
Yeah, I could, you know.
Hypothetically, hypothetically.
Whatever you want.
Okay.
And it's actually, it's actually thirty-three feet more required, because it has to be another thirty-three feet to the ultimate right of way.
Okay.
So you're looking at the, just the right of way, and if you go to the next, next item on there, it's another thirty-three feet.
Okay.
Or another ten feet beyond what you were looking at.
Okay, so.
So thirty-three feet further from the road.
Another thirty-three feet further than the road, and when we're talking about the road, we're talking about twenty-three?
The center line of twenty-three, I think it is.
Because there's two setbacks, there's the setback from twenty-three, and there's a setback from White Horse, that they have to be, get variances from.
And there's the legal right of way and the ultimate right of way, which are two separate right of ways that are imposed on those, on those roads individually, they're not, they're not like the same right of way, so there's a, if, if, Paul, if you'd like to take that on.
So like the, the first one about the gas canopy for two A that they're talking about, that's more talking about like the front yard setbacks that are required for the parcel, but when you go into two B, they're talking about the distance from the legal right of way, so there's, there's, there's particular numbers based off of this that they, they overlap each other, so they're, they're, they're kind of in a marriage, but they're two separate items, because one's a front yard setback and one's a distance from a legal right of way. But they, but, but, but they are, the distances that they are presently proposing are, are an improvement to what exists there today, and that was part of their argument, that they were, the, the parcels, the two parcels that are existing had the existing nonconformities, and they're improving them, but the, the, excuse me, the four parcels, but the challenge is that they're proposing two brand-new lots, so the existing nonconformities disappear once those, those lots are, you know, eradicated.
A concern is that in variance cases, there's always hardship, you have to show a hardship that is not caused by the applicant, and I imagine they would say, well, these are minor things, if we can't put these, you know, facilities or canopies where we need them, we can't build our Wawa, and we're out of luck.
Well, would they not be able to build a Wawa, or would they simply have to reduce the square footage of their Wawa?
Well, maybe.
And that's not, that's a, obviously a question for someone.
We do require the canopy, that's another thing.
Yeah.
You know, they can't just not do the canopy, we, we require it. And I can see the argument telling me that we need a certain amount of square footage in our Wawa to make it work, and blah, blah, blah. So the answer to your question is, yes, it could be done with a smaller Wawa, or a reconfigured Wawa, you might be able to do it, you might not, but if they can't do it, they will be in here telling, or they'll tell the, the zoning hearing board that they, they can't use the property for something it's already being used for, so.
And you said that there has to be a showing of hardship, so they're the ones who are seeking the, the variance. So can you explain a little bit about who has the burden of showing? I mean, because they would have to build, I mean, I'm presuming they would have to build new, they're not going to just use the existing gasoline.
They're going to knock down everything.
Yeah, they're going to knock down everything.
Are they keeping the underground tax, though?
It's their burden, it's their hardship, and it can't be a financial hardship, generally speaking, it has to be related to a. It has to be related to a condition of the ground which makes the property unique. There is some room for applicants under something called the Hertzberg decision, that where you're talking about dimensional variances as opposed to use variances, there's a little more flexibility in the courts to allow them. For example, if you want to put a deck on and you're two feet short to put your deck with the side yard, you'll generally be able to get that unless there's some direct harm that's related from that. So we're probably going a little too far here because we're on television and the Wawa could be watching this performance. But, you know, there are, it's harder to get a use variance than it is to get a dimensional variance. I'll check with my code enforcement guys. That's correct, isn't it? Thank you.
Paul, the tanks that are there now, you can see in, I think it's dash two. They're, they are what's existing now. They're going to leave those in place underground?
I think they're, I think they're coming out as well.
I believe that they had said that they will be removed. I think this is going to be a brand new configuration.
Probably larger tanks if there's more pumps.
Yeah, and they might, you know, the diesel and the other biofuels that might be looking to.
They might be, they'll be made of newer materials to the tanks. It'll be more secure.
So what are we looking for? I'm sorry, Bob.
No, it's okay.
I'm still in my role. I shouldn't be.
We're trying.
If you don't wish to do anything.
You don't have to do anything.
If you wish to send me there for any particular purpose, then you should direct me to do that.
I have concerns with the pumps being that close to the street. I think the fact that they're reconfiguring the lots gives us a leg to stand on. And I have health and safety concerns if a truck or a car goes off the road and hits one of those pumps. I'm sure that's one of the reasons why they want them set so far back. And I don't think it's, just don't think it's safe. So I think if, for no other reason, that one.
It also improves circulation at the front of the lot, which can be difficult when cars pulling in. So if you have circulation that's impacted at the front of the lot by a smaller cart path in the parking lot, it can impact the actual circulation through the lot. So that, that could be, could be a concern.
Which may not be an issue right now at the Exxon, but could be an issue, a more, a greater issue at the Wawa.
And it is an issue at the Exxon. And I mean, from what I've seen driving by, it's an issue at the Exxon. Well, that's also exacerbated by the fact that they have an entrance right on the corner, which would be eliminated by this project. They would have to move it as far back from the corner as they could on the lot, which would put it, I don't know, 110, 120 feet off the corner, which is better than now. I mean, that's, it would just be that one entrance and the one up White Horse. But, yeah, they were talking at the, they were talking about that, why they didn't want to move it back and why they didn't want to move it back was because they have a, they feel that there's a safety issue. They expressed a safety issue between the circulation of the cars that park right in front of the building and the ones pulling into and out of the gas pump, fueling station areas.
That's, that's.
But crunching that down, they have like a 30 some foot cartway there, which could, I mean, I feel it could be crunched down a little bit to give more leeway on the front end with the roadside. And that's, that's just my personal opinion.
Maybe that they're trying to put the very largest footprint of everything they can in to.
Right.
Trying to compact it too much.
Can you catch this in terms of the encroachment being by the canopy in both A and B? I'm presuming that the canopy relates to where the pumps are.
Yes, because, because we're the.
They say canopy, they mean pumps.
They mean everything below it too. Yeah. So that if you move the canopy, the pumps move back towards the, towards the actual convenience store.
Correct.
And they have to have the canopy because the canopy is part of the fire suppression?
Well, no, it's also part of our, well, maybe yes, but as part of our ordinance, we require a canopy.
Yeah. They can install the fire suppression on there if they want.
So I guess the way I'm looking at this is there are five items here. And if we want, Bill.
Can I, can I jump in? I know where this is going. If I'm going, it may be unnecessarily restrictive to say only five more than two.
Oh, okay.
I think you should send me. And I, you know, I have your instructions to what your most important. But I, something may come up at the hearing and I don't want to be.
That's true.
Yeah.
Constrained to say I can't argue that. I don't want to.
Yes, you read my mind.
Okay.
Yeah, think of partial waiver or think of partial variance. I mean, think of partial. But I mean, I'd like, I think it would be good to send.
I think so too.
So I'll make that, I'll make that motion that we send Bill on behalf of the board to argue those, all five items.
And any that come up?
And any.
Any others that come up during here and there?
If necessary, yeah.
I'll second that.
We, public comment?
Any public comment?
In regards to the entire discussion at all?
Well, we're, we're talking mainly right now about the zoning hearing board and the items that are listed that we're going to send representation to to let them know that we protest against those. Is that a word?
Discussion specifically on the motion that was just made.
I mean, I'll make a public comment just.
If you could give us your name and address. Is this on?
Yeah, Kirk, way on 602 Penny Packer. My main concern is that if we're allowing them to take down multiple properties and combine them into one, does that set a precedent for other places? As the Wawa then, undoubtedly, put the next gas station out of business, we've already ripped out all the fuel pumps underneath, destroyed the buildings, put things together. When they put that next gas station out of business, they'll have to rip out all of that. And then someone else could possibly buy the pot and buy multiple and just keep building up that intersection as we set the precedent to allow it. That's my concern.
We can't legally stop people from consolidating lots and building what's allowed.
On the, if they're making a new parcel, as we indicated.
Yes.
We should at least hold them to.
I misunderstood your comment, sorry. Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm.
No, no, I understand.
I'm prepared to step up now. This is quicker than I realized it had been, so.
Yeah.
That's still kind of in my head.
Thank you.
Now, you make a good point. If they're going to consolidate, one of the things that we're seeing is that they then have to conform to the.
Yes.
Ordinances of whatever was grandfathered in, in our opinion.
Sure.
Is not anymore.
And if you let them not do that, then whoever's next is.
Right.
Might not have to do it either.
You're setting a precedent, right?
Yeah. So I think we're in agreement with you that we want to go stand our ground on those things.
It's all right.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Thank you.
Melinda Miquelio, 805, the Bruce program. I'm sure you're already doing this, but I just want to emphasize that we talked about hardships potentially for Wawa. And I also want to make sure that we're addressing the hardship with potential for residents that live right next door to that Wawa.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion. We have it seconded to send Bill over on our behalf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So Lori, will you put up on the website where the location of this hearing will be?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Has it been decided that it's going to be at one of the school buildings? Or is it still?
We're still working out the details.
Okay.
Okay, announcements.
Under your, under your agenda.
Okay.
You have a separate sheet.
Got one more there?
Yep, there you go.
There it is. My bad. Reminder that the Board of Supervisors has voted to change their meeting dates and time for 2023. Business meetings will be held the second Wednesday of each month now at 7:00. Workshop meetings will be held the fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 as needed. Township, Schuylkill Township Administration Building will be closed on Monday, January 16th for Martin Luther King Day. And the Schuylkill Township Police Association coat drive ends January 31st, 2023. Kindly drop your new or very gently used coats at the Township Building during normal business hours. And do we have anything else? We already did. Or, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Do you guys have any events coming up? The fire company? All right.
We do have some events scheduled. We'll be reminding you each month of them. So February 18th is the soup sale. And there's picnic breakfast on March 4th. Then there'll be Easter egg hunt. But we have time to bring them up at future meetings as well.
Great.
The soup sale is when?
Soup sale is February 18th.
Okay.
And there's pre-ordering online when you get closer to the gym.
We love your soup.
Yes.
It goes to a lot of families I know. So you guys do a great job with that. Good. If you could do more lasagna days, I'd really appreciate that too. They are awesome. Yeah. Oh, man, I had this huge steak dinner right before I came out. All right. Anything else? Any other announcements? Anybody have anything? If not, I'll make a motion.
Public, public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
Yes. Didn't have that on there, my bad.
Any additional public comments?
Yes.
Frank Miquelio, David Muster, Spurden. I just wanted to point out that we know that in the Wawa situation and also on the Sedgeley Farms situation, you folks have a lot of factors to consider. I mean, we hear them in some meetings. One factor that's come up in previous meetings, and I think you've heard this, is some comments, pro and con from residents about both projects. So in an effort to get you some quantitative information on resident opinions, we set up a survey by an experienced pollster or survey person, which I believe was delivered to Lori about a week or so ago. PowerPoint presentation? Yes, ma'am. It looks formidable. It takes about 10, 15 minutes to go through. We would simply ask that you give this equal consideration. I know you've talked about zoning, you've talked about this and you've talked about that. In our opinion, as our representatives, our opinions should be strongly, you know, strongly weighed in that. I don't know if anyone here is not over the surveys on protecting school field TWP dot work. If you want to take a look at it, the survey and all the results. And as you all go through it, if you have any questions or want further information on anything that we surveyed,